...is called to order, the time is 5:30 PM. We have the presence of a quorum and this meeting has been called and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct a public hearing to discuss becoming a District of Innovation. We have asked the community members to sign up to speak and we have a few who have. Before we get started, I'm going to make a few comments and then Beth Martinez is going to provide a short presentation for us. On behalf of the Board, we want to thank everyone who's here this evening. We appreciate you coming out and offering feedback for this very important endeavor that we're embarking on here. We are very excited about the process. We're optimistic about the tools that District of Innovation might provide for us as we develop our strategic plan, how it might be useful and beneficial for students and teachers in Fort Bend ISD. We strive to be innovative in our planning, in the development and implementation of programs in Fort Bend ISD, and in providing services and opportunities for all students, regardless of background, circumstances, or ability, and our hope is that this can help us continue that. So, we look forward to the comprehensive and collaborative process that will take place after this hearing and the plan that might be presented for our consideration. So with that, if the other Board members don't have any other comments at this time, we will proceed with the presentation by the District, Ms. Martinez.
Good evening, Board members, Dr. Dupree, and guests. Thank you for being here this evening to provide information for our, informing our decision or the Board's decision on pursuing becoming a District of Innovation. I'd like to give you just a little bit of background for those of you who may not have been with us in prior Board meetings. I'd like to, is that better? I'd like to provide some background, thank you, some background information about where we are in this process and the bottom line for really why we're bringing this to the Board to consider becoming a District of Innovation, and that is exactly what Ms. Tassan spoke to, to be able to have an innovative, creative approach to informing and improving teaching and learning in Fort Bend ISD, to be able to possibly waive some statutory requirements that might be inhibiting that creativity or that innovation in some way. And so, what we have done is asked the Board to sign a resolution or agree to a resolution, which they did in October, and so we are now in the public hearing stage where we're able to receive public comment and then move forward in this process. In the last month since the Board signed the resolution, we've worked with the Department of Community Relations to provide information to the community in a variety of ways, and that includes our internal staff members as well as our external community. There are messages that have been put forward on the superintendent's blog. We've utilized the newsletter Fort Bend ISD Express, some all email user emails, and also some information has been shared with students and through the campus marquees to advertise for this evening. If the Board approves moving forward, then we will move forward with our local innovation committee, and we have been receiving recommended membership from Board members recommending three community members or three stakeholders to be involved at their, from their recommendation, and then for Dr. Dupree to recommend to us nine members to be a part of a 30-member local innovation committee. Our next steps in the DOI process, or the District of Innovation process, will be at the Board's direction and then moving forward to form that local innovation committee. We will be working through this process with these, this 30-member committee, which will be facilitated by an outside facilitator through our K-12 insight and guided with the legal advice and legal consultation from outside legal representation, and we're fortunate to have Ms. Debbie Estarak with us this evening. She will be guiding the innovation, the local innovation committee through this process to make sure that all legalities are followed to the letter of the law, et cetera. We will be launching within, actually tomorrow, the Community Priorities Survey, which will go out to all of our community members and secondary students for input into our strategic planning process, but will also provide information to the local innovation committee about what the community feels are priorities with regard to teaching and learning in Fort Bend ISD. So, we want to enter into this very creative approach to improving education in Fort Bend ISD in a very transparent way, and will provide information about the progress of the committee throughout on a website that is going to be dedicated to District of Innovation and opening up a Let's Talk for District of Innovation for any questions or comments that might come from the community or from our staff throughout the process. And so, the intent of this evening is to gain insight and feedback from the public, and so I'm going to stop talking and open that up to our public comment for this evening, and I'll ask Ms. Tassan to guide us in that process.
Thank you, Mrs. Martinez. So I have four members signed up here. We'll work it the way we normally do for when, when community members speak at the Board meetings. Ms. Heliger is not here yet, so Mr. Burdine will time. You'll have three minutes to speak. He will give you a 30-second warning, and when the three minutes are up, we will move to the next person. And if you have questions, administration is here to answer them as well as the Board members. So, we will start with Kerry Waschendorf. I'm not sure if that microphone is on yet.
Let's see.
It is, okay.
It is?
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kerry Waschendorf, representative, President from the Fort Bend Employee Federation, and I'm here on behalf of 1,951 members who have a collective concern about the District of Innovation. We understand that we're just going forward as that previous slideshow, but we are concerned that there are key safeguards that must be protected, and we wanted to come at this time and present that to you. First of all, we're very concerned about the Chapter 21 contract rights. It's important that we have teachers that are working in this as part of a stable workforce who experience professional treatment and with insurances of continued cooperation between the District and the teachers, and that's why it's important to have that contract. But also with that comes the right to a termination or a non-renewal hearing, and I invite you to remember back to 2010, 2011, when all those teachers that protested their position in the RIF and appealed, they all got their job back because once their, once their work was reviewed, it would show that they were of great value to the District. And so, it is that that we want to keep in place. And also, exactly that evaluation that I just mentioned is very important, and we want to maintain that as evaluation of classroom experience. We do not want this to be the arbitrary work of the principal to decide what happens to the teacher. They might like the coach and they might not like the yearbook sponsor, so we want to make sure that that evaluation is based on classroom performance. Also, near and dear to every teacher is her planning time, 45 minutes every day, and lunch, a duty-free lunch of 30 minutes. We already see an erosion of those rights in Fort Bend ISD. So instead of doing away with them or changing them, we need to bolster this right of all the teachers to have some sanity planning time in their day that's protected by the District. Also, within that classroom, we need to give teachers the right to remove a student that's disruptive or unnecessarily difficult and that has been documented. Those are Chapter 37 rights, and we want to stand by those as well as the standards for the District that guide the disciplinary programs, alternative education.
30 seconds.
Suspension. Also, I can't get away without mentioning that our elementary teachers will be in despair if we relax the 22-to-1 class standards, and we can, we must maintain our healthcare insurance. So what we're asking is that you keep all these solid safeguards in place, don't tinker with the basics. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waschendorf. Thank you for being here. Thank you. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree and Board members. I'm a product of Fort Bend ISD, growing up in the District, graduating from Willeridge High School, and I became an administrator about eight years ago, and I'm certified to work with our special ed group, our bilingual group, and our gifted and talented group. I'm also an executive board member of KFT, so I represent a large number of our teachers as well. And as such, I have, I think I have a unique perspective on what our teachers and our students need. I'd like to speak to collaboration, acknowledging that there are many challenges ahead. It's important to work collaboratively, focused on common goals, and improving the quality of our education system for all our students. No one knows the needs of our students more than our teachers. Therefore, it's imperative as we move forward with this process that our teachers have an integral and a relevant role in developing the unique plan of becoming a District of Innovation. We are truly here to make a difference. Most teachers are not in this profession to become rich or famous. We want to be part of the decision-making process when it comes to improving our students and our profession. Teachers can be an enthusiastic advocate for those things that advance our students and improve our profession. There are several groups that I feel need to be represented in this process in order to fairly represent all the stakeholders. Those include our ELL populations, our special education populations, teachers and students on both sides of the District, all students of diversity, professional, paraprofessionals, and support staff. All of these groups need to be represented in this process and should be included as part of the team that develops this plan, and it is fair and equitable for all the key players. Communication is the key. Many teachers I've spoken to have no idea that this process is even being contemplated. When they find out, the suspension level is frightening. The knee-jerk reaction has been to think of ways to leave the District at all cost. It is, the last thing we need is for our quality professionals to leave the District due to a lack of communication. If this is an opportunity to be innovative and creative, we need to, and we need to improve the educational system for our students, and yes, for our teachers, and as we acknowledge that well-rested, creative, and energetic teachers are important to the educational process. We need to be transparent and enthusiastic about including teachers in that process. Communication is the key.
30 seconds.
Nothing is more important than the improvement of our educational system, and all, on that we all agree. Let's work together collaboratively, collaboratively, much like our colleagues in Austin have done, and create a program that is truly innovative. That way, all the stakeholders will be truly buy-in, and teachers, families, and students will be knocking down our door to be part of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here.
Good evening, Board. My name is Rodrigo Carrion. As you see me, I present myself normally, and remission, I want you to hold this back because I read in the Chronicle, one of our Board members stating, bring flexibility to our classrooms. Well, we have the flexibility. All we gotta do is rezone properly, making Highway 6 the rezoning area for four high schools that we have on the east side, and three on the south side of Highway 6, and that will give us flexibility to Elkins and fulfill the seats that we have empty at Marshall High School and Willeridge High School, and to prove that we're working together and love one each other and help one another, but, but not showing signs of, of what shall I hate or racist by not wanting to rezone our residence from Quah Valley to Marshall High School, because when I came to school, Douglas High School, we were the only nice and divided high school. We had African-American, Hispanic, and Anglo. Clemens was 90% Anglo, Willeridge 90% African-American, but now we gotta show we're working together and help each other together. And also, before, trying to come like to a school district like Haiti or Spring Branch, well, they're wealthy school districts, but I've heard we're a poor school district, so we gotta count on the state and depend on the state to bring in the fundings that we need to help our school districts, fund them properly and wisely. And that way, either our, what's this, engineering, they did our rezoning plans the previous two times, either they failed or the school let it down. Now, we're gonna make Highway 6 the rezon properly, that way our schools will have more flexibility and classes, and the class sizes will be at their good, good esteem, because our schools, if they're under, lower capacity of smaller sized rooms, well, they should be doing great, but wonder why not? You don't have good teachers or good education, that we need to bring in the teachers that they're needed. Marshall High School, Willeridge High School, and Missouri City Middle School, all the schools, and plus, communication, yes, we need to have at least one administrative principal that be bilingual, bilingual especially in our east side, and for these schools, High Tower and the other ones. Anyway, and a whole lot of our, what is this, on our bond of planning of building a new high school that we want for here, for Riverstone area, well, if we move Quah Valley to the north side, well, we'll leave Elkins, mini a space for the Riverstone and think about our future high school later, but once we fill in the other vacant seats.
30 seconds.
So we do have plenty of flexibility, we just gotta use it, take advantage and use it properly and wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. Thank you for being here. Tammy Moreno.
Hi, everybody. I feel like I haven't been here in a while. So admittedly, I don't know enough about what it means to become a District of Innovation, and I think therein lies the problem. I think if I don't know enough about what that means, then no one in the community knows enough about what that means. I get that you're all trying to be transparent, and I know things have been communicated, but there's so many giant question marks that I, you all know I'm very active on the Fort Bend ISD Concerns Facebook page. I've gotten at least 30 to 35 emails from teachers who I've never met saying, please go to that meeting. We're afraid to talk because our jobs might be at stake, but we need someone to talk to the Board on our behalf. I can't possibly because I don't, I don't know what it means for them. I don't understand why this is going to benefit our kids, how it's going to benefit our kids, why we're considering it, where it came from. We're talking in a lot of vague generalities about creative innovations that are going to make a difference in our classrooms, but I'm not really seeing any of that, and to me, I've already lived through iPad purchases, and I've lived through, you know, rezoning after rezoning and lots of other sort of failed attempts at making a difference. I really need to hear what differences we're going to be making and how it's going to personally impact my children and my neighbors' children and the children down the other side of the District and the teachers that I've come to love and respect, and are they going to stay or are they going to flee? So I think there's a lot of unanswered questions that probably could have been answered a little better before having a public hearing. I think a little bit more information maybe would have gotten a little bit more of the public here, and I know you promoted the hearing, but nobody knows what it's about. So that, I mean, just, just give us more because I'm scared. I'm scared of why we want to do away with ratios. I'm scared of teachers who are worried about their contract rights. I'm frightened by it, and I feel we might be biting off more than we can chew with, you know, a $30 million CTE center coming down the pike. I've got construction happening at my elementary school that is already six months behind schedule.
30 seconds.
I think the public just needs more. It's not just about being transparent, it's about how much information you're giving, and I don't know if you all don't have that information yet, but that scares me too. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno. Thanks for being here. Those are the only members that have signed up this evening to speak. I'm gonna open it up now. Does administration want to address or speak to anything that was said this evening, and then I want to open it up for the Board to? I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, is there anything that you wanted to add?
First, I'd like, this one works well. I would like to appreciate, let everyone know how much we do appreciate the comments, and as you could see, I was taking copious notes so that we can make note as we move, provided that we move forward. The Innovation Committee, or the Local Innovation Committee, once established per Board approval, will be the entity that, that explores the possible waivers that could be sought with input then from the community within that process as they move forward. They'll be guided, as I said, by outside facilitators. It's not a process that's based on Board direction or staff direction, other than the staff members that are involved as working on the committee, but it, because I'm the one speaking, it's not going to be a committee that's led by, by me or what I perceive to be the needs of the District. It will be a process that facilitated by our, our facilitators would lead the public through, the public committee through understanding what those possible innovations are, what they would mean, what they, what those statutory requirements might be keeping our teachers from being able to do, our students from being able to do. Other districts have sought from all waivers to a limited number of waivers based on what the committee has researched and come back to, to recommend to the Board. Just a little bit more about the process and the kind of the checks and balances within that process is that once the Local Innovation Committee has done the work and has, it has firm recommendations in place for the waivers they would like for the District to seek, they then go through our Academic Advisory Council, which is a representative group, a district-wide representative group of community members, parents, business members, and certainly a large portion of staff members, and that entity has to approve the plan before the plan would ever come to the Board for consideration. And then at that point, the Board would have to approve the innovation plan by no less than a two-thirds majority of Board members approving the plan rather than a majority. It has to be a two-thirds majority. So I realize, I understand as a, as a staff member how there's some unknowns because we really are wanting to, we must allow the process to work through the Local Innovation Committee and through their learning about what innovations are possible, what waivers can be sought, and then based on the needs of the District and the feedback from the community, first beginning with the priorities survey, and then through the public comment that will be a part of that process moving forward, how they then need to shape those waivers to make that recommendation to the Board.
Thank you, Beth. Yes, I'd add just a couple of comments to that as well, because number one, I really value the feedback you all have shared this evening, because it's, it's helpful to know that if you feel like the communication has not been effective, then that's good for us to know. I would say that we've been intentional in a great deal of the communication in not trying to communicate too much detail because we don't want it to look like there's a predetermined outcome, because we've heard some of the concerns expressed by some of the staff about some of the things that could be impacted, and, but we don't want anyone to read anything we put out or hear what we say and feel like we're going down a certain path to, towards certain mandates or certain waivers. But I'm still, but we're still going to follow up on the feedback you've given, especially about the communication, to make sure that we are being thorough enough in what we tell community and staff, because we are about transparency, we're about having a very open process, but I want to echo what Beth said, in that this is not an administration-driven process. It is truly, once the committee is formed, they do the work, and that's one of the reasons we have the attorney guiding that, to keep all of us on the right path with that. The other thing I would say, and I just think I've already kind of begun to craft what I want my next message to be, listening to some of the things you've said this evening, but I think it's important that I say this very plainly, fear is not healthy for an organization. Fear is not good for anyone in any aspect of their life, and certainly not in their job, when they're having to be on and work so in such a dedicated way to our students every day. So I know words are only as good as the person who speaks them, and in a situation like this, there's, there's concern or lack of trust about where is this really headed, but I do want to say, and I will continue to say, we're not going down a predetermined path, and we're certainly not interested in doing any harm to teachers, staff members, paraprofessionals, anyone at all. We're here to build and empower and professionalize everybody in this organization and to develop their skills. And so that's, we want to support teachers and campus staff, and we believe that the tools that could become available through this process will enable us to better support and empower staff not remove their jobs or take away their protections and those kinds of things. So I do, you know, I think we've had a good track record organizationally for the last several years, and we want to continue that by building Fort Bend ISD as one unified team, and certainly this is not the kind of thing we would want to impede that progress. So I'm gonna ask you to, to walk this journey with us, keep us accountable, but know that the committee, it's their responsibility to evaluate, study, and bring forth a plan that it's not something we're going to be driving as an administration.
Mrs. James.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. So I hear, so I heard that from the community, just those who spoke, that you don't know what the plan is and you feel some anxiety over that. Well, that's exactly the situation. We don't know what the plan is either, because the way an innovative, the innovation plan is put together is by the community input that Dr. Dupree spoke of. If you feel anxious because this has come on quickly, then you're right about that. It has come on quickly, and the reason that it's come on quickly is because this is, this District of Innovation came up as a, as a, as a concept when we began the strategic planning and the vision and planning process at the beginning of this semester. And we realized that as the legislative session approaches, we wanted to look at District of Innovation or have the community look at District of Innovation to see if it's something that we want to pursue in Fort Bend ISD. So out of the Vision and Planning Committee came, well, maybe we need to look at District of Innovation, which is why it came to the Board. The Board had to agree on a resolution then in order to hold the public hearing, to form the committee, and now the, all the steps that we're in now. So there is no plan, there has been no input on a plan, there is no preconceived idea about what the plan should be, and it's up to the, to the community and the process to develop the plan, to gather community input, to put the plan together, and then to agree to it or not to agree to it. Take it then to the next step is the Academic Advisory Council that Mrs. Martinez talked about, and then as a final step, it comes back to the Board. But, so I just want to say that that's my understanding of the, of where we are in this process. The other thing I want to say that I heard from the speakers that I absolutely agree with is we absolutely need to have good communication and collaboration throughout this entire process. I think it's definitely the intention of the Board to have communication and, and certainly collaboration. We need to have representation from all aspects of our community, from all parts of our District, to be sure that we have good, solid input from our community that gives a variety of opinions, and then the idea is to come to some sort of consensus about what might be a plan going forward. Then, then, it's only then that it comes to the Board. So I guess those are the things that I heard. I'm personally excited about this process because I feel like it's an opportunity for creativity and innovation. We do not wish to harm any employees, any staff members, any students, any community members in this process at all. The concept is to be innovative and creative, and I am excited about that because I think this Board has demonstrated creativity and innovation already as we've gone forward, and I'm looking forward to seeing what other things we can come up with. So that's, that's how I understood it, and those would be my comments. Thank you, Mrs. Tassan.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Mr. Rice.
Thank you, President Tassan. I would like to echo Mrs. James's comments and let the audience know that if my memory is correct, and Ms. Martinez, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the ability for a school district to become a District of Innovation was created in 1996, when charter schools were created, and charter schools were created to loosen some of the fetters and ties that public education is bound to. And at the time, it was said, well, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, so if we're going to allow charter schools to experience some of these things, then we should also allow a school district. Now, up to this point in time, the entire reason that charter schools were created, which was to incubate new ideas and new teaching processes, really has come to naught. There's nothing that's been brought forth and adopted by many school districts, a thousand school districts around the state. However, now suddenly, the Texas- However, now suddenly, the Texas Legislature is bent on providing education savings accounts, which is another word for vouchers. They suddenly realize that allowing public schools to apply for District of Innovation will remove the competitive advantage that charter schools have with public schools. And so this is very likely going to go away in the next legislative session. So this, this is one reason for the impetus behind us moving forward at this time. And as Mrs. James points out and Ms. Martinez points out, if we wind up with the District of Innovation, it will be after considerable, considerable input from the people who are selected to serve on this committee and put forth these new ideas and adoptions that ultimately will be approved or rejected by the board. I'd also like to comment when people make, I heard some comments about, "We'll just ask the state for more money." I would like to remind everyone that we, in fact, have been doing that and that we filed a lawsuit with the Texas Supreme Court, us and six hundred other school districts, which we lost. And now, our ability to file a lawsuit with the state is permanently removed. And we're at the complete mercy of the Texas Legislature as to how public education gets funded. And I would like everyone to know that as the CAD appraisal value increases in our area, the school district gets, recognizes and gets to use that increase for twelve months. So as the number of homes and businesses increases in our CAD appraisal area, and as those homes and businesses increase in value, we receive that delta in, in terms of tax revenue for twelve months. And then the state of Texas recognizes that, that delta, and the following year, they short us by a corresponding amount. And that is why the split, which was fifty-two percent local taxes and forty-eight percent state when I first got on this board in two thousand and ten, is now sixty-two percent, thirty-eight percent, sixty-two percent local property taxes. And if hypothetically, those CAD appraisal values would increase at infinitum, we would reach a point where the state was not contributing one thin dime to public education, which is a violation of their constitutional duty. Now, we know it won't do that because what goes up must come down, and generally, that happens when we can least afford it, when we've got kids coming here and we've passed bonds and we, we have bond money to build schools, but we have no maintenance and operation money to staff them. And it makes it very difficult, this, this instability of a, a permanent funding source makes it very difficult for us to take care of our teachers and staff with pay raises that can stick year to year, providing group health insurance, which as everyone knows is very expensive. And we've got a very good plan, and we, we do the very best we can, and I'm very proud of this school district. But I just want everyone to know that the reasons behind us moving forward with the District of Innovation and how hard, we know how hard our teachers are working, our staff is also working very hard to do this. And I would like everyone to know that public education in the state of Texas is under assault, and it's really time for people that are interested in public education to wake up and watch what's going on with the Texas Legislature. And because vouchers are gonna pass, probably, it's very likely that they will pass, under the name of education savings account. On the average, it takes eighty-five hundred dollars to educate a student in this state. A person would have to live in a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar home to pay to generate eighty-five hundred dollars. Most of us don't. And so where does the other money come from? It comes from people who no longer have children in school, whose children have been educated and who continue to pay their taxes and pay into the public school system to make sure, who realize that public schools were there for me when I was a child, and I wanna make sure that they're there for the kids of today now that my own children are out of, out of public education. Our schools are the place where all of our children will go to school every day, they'll say the Pledge of Allegiance together, they'll go to lunch together and recess, they'll play in sports, they'll be in band, and all of these things, and, and they'll learn to become friends. And in my opinion, that is America's best hope for the future going forward. It resides in our public school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Are there additional comments?
I just wanted to do-
Mr. George.
I don't know how I can follow Mr. Rice because he put it in the, the best, the way we can put it, but my understanding, you know, especially I appreciate the fact that there are, people are watching what is going on here, that's why you're here and you're speaking, and absolutely, I'm a big fan of good communication. And we always talk about, we don't like federal government telling us what we should do in local schools, or even state government doesn't understand what is good for Fort Bend ISD. And I, my understanding was, this is an opportunity, maybe personalize some of our needs, local needs, and, and that's my limited understanding. So there are numerous concerns, and I think I agree with Dr. Dupree, and he promised we are going to have better communication. And, and so I guess it, I know I'm repeating, but it's still fluid and it is still in the process, and I hope we all could collectively watch and develop this program. And I have seen some of the districts doing, already in the process, and then they are, well, or the community is excited about what is going on in, in this area. So I believe collectively, we could find out what it is, and I think this is the process of finding out. And, and so appreciate the comment, and I, I believe it is, it's a good discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Any other comments from the trustees?
I would just add to that, I agree with what Mrs. James had to say, I agree with what Mr. Rice had to say. I mean, just to be frank, one of the things I've realized in the last two and a half years of being on this side as opposed to on that side, when I would show up to board meetings and comment, is, is that many times the regulations tie our hands. There are things that we wanna do for teachers, there are things that we wanna do for students, there are ways that we want to innovate, there are partnerships that we would love to see formed. I've worked on several committees outside of Fort Bend ISD to help with legislative planning and with regards to education, and there are many regulations that tie our hands. So for me personally, and, and as, as some of my colleagues said, there's a possibility that this particular law could go away, and we would not have the opportunity to seize on some of these, to do away with some of these regulations, or at least use them in a way that would benefit our students and our teachers. The purpose was for, you know, we always go to the, to Texas Legislature and we want more local control. And the reason we want more local control is because we want you to have more local control. We wanna hear, we want to respond to what our teachers are saying, we want to respond to what our community says you want. And for me, my hope is that if this does materialize, then I wanna look for ways that we can offer that. How can we offer our community more control over the education of your kids, our kids? I have three kids in the public school system in Fort Bend ISD right now, and I could probably sit right now and list twenty ways that we might, could do it better if we had a little more flexibility in the classroom. And it's a little bit easier to see now that I see more of what, of what goes on and how things operate, but that's my hope for it. I was intentional as the board president in making sure that we didn't put any details out there because I did not want in any way to usurp the power of the committee that is being formed. The committee is made up of community members from all areas of the district, from, with all backgrounds. Special education, of course, was one of, you know, I tried to make sure that we had somebody on there to speak. I, myself, put forth two staff members to make sure that Fort Bend ISD teachers and staff members are represented, and I know Dr. Dupree has tried to make sure that we've covered everything as well. And we want the committee to drive this process and to really dig in and see, how can this help? What is it that our community wants to do? And how can District of Innovation potentially help us do it? And so that's the process that we're embarking on. We want the, the community and the committee to drive that process, and in the end, it's gonna be brought back to us and we're gonna look and see what's come out of that. And, and that's really the extent of it. So even for us, you know, I understand, Tammy, you expressing, you know, "I don't really know what this is." Well, we struggled with that too, you know, we, we really did. We struggled a little bit with that, with that too. But as we dug in and watched other districts do it, we're seeing more and more how it can be used to benefit students and to benefit teachers. And, and I don't think that is the intent of this board, and as Dr. Dupree said, it is to help and not to harm. And that is really what we've always been about, and it's what we're gonna continue to be about. And, you know, we've embarked on our listening tours this year, and we are listening. So I, I definitely wanna reassure you guys, and you can go back and reassure your communities that we are listening, and we want you to continue to weigh in, continue to let us know what you think and what your perspectives are, 'cause it's the only way we're gonna get anything out of this that's gonna be, you know, good, good for the students and good for you guys. So that's all I have to say, and if none of the other board members have any other comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. We will take about ten minutes, and then we'll come back and start our regular board meeting. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate it.